...of $2 billion today. SITLA generates revenue from oil, gas, and mining leases, grazing, telecommunications sites, real estate development, renewable energy projects, land sales, and other commercial and industrial development. Entirely self-funded, at no cost to taxpayers, SITLA takes a small portion of trust fund revenue for operations and deposits the remaining revenue balance into each institution's permanent fund. A separate agency, the School and Institutional Trust Fund Office, manages and invests these permanent endowments in a diversified portfolio, intended to protect and grow each endowment. Prop sheets for each permanent fund are distributed annually to each beneficiary, which uses it for its most pressing need. Utah schools with a deaf and a blind might use their distributions to encourage student reading and technology programs, while the UTE hospital might help to support patient therapy and education resources. And each public school in Utah receives annual funding from the Permanent School Fund. Every school has its own school community council made up of teachers, parents, and principals, which determines how to spend these discretionary funds with the sole restriction that funds be spent on academic projects.
That was a very brief overall view of SITLA and what we're trying to accomplish. If I might be able to go to about a three or four-minute bullet point, some of this will be redundant of what you just saw. But I'd like to stress a few points of when we really get our authority as we're going through this PowerPoint. Like here this is. As you see right here, the Enabling Clause was given to the state of Utah in 1894 from the United States Congress. That was our statehood before we entered into the Union. And as you saw on the film, it granted into Utah sections two, 1632, and 36 out of every town section. Also, it specifically described who the beneficiaries would be. Go to the next one. Higher education, University of Utah. You missed one. Backup one. It's all right. Here is a list of all of our beneficiaries, of which we pull money out of the trust according to the percent of the trust in which they own. By far, the majority, which is 96%, is owned by our public schools, which is where the vast majority of the money comes from. But every piece of land out of the 3.4 million acres has somebody's name on it. Sometimes they have a combination of two or three names on it, where they have split either the estate or the mineral estate within that same section of land. The next one, please. As you see right there, SITLA, as it is known today, was created in 1994. There's 3.4 million acres of surface and about 4.3 million of subsurface minerals. We are a quasi-independent organization. The governor, the only thing the governor can do is confirm me. Whether he likes me or not, he either has that authority of confirming me. He can't fire me. My board of directors fires me, but the governor appoints my board of directors. So it's a check and balance there, hopefully to keep politics out of it. As you can see, our revenue source is of energy, real estate, surface, mining, easements for telecommunications. It goes on and on like that. My board members, there are seven of them, are made up of some of the best business minds in the state of Utah. Anywhere, some oil and gas, to mining, to development, to water. It's a very good board. And they are put there because they are successful and because they force us to think out of the box. We're doing some kind of different things right now under the renewable energy. And it's because the board start thinking, well, why are we allowing people to come to us? Why don't we go to them and get them to sign up for power purchase agreements? We have the land. We have 3.4 million acres. We also have a lot of transmission lines going across our land. So why are we allowing a middleman to come in and reap maybe the cream off the milk? Why don't we do a lot of these things ourselves? And that's what my board has started us down that road to do. Not trying to be in a monopoly, but we're working for our beneficiaries. SITLA came into being in 1994 during the legislative session because in 1993, a Supreme Court made a declaration under a lawsuit called National Parks Conservation Association versus State Lands. Some of the things that the Supreme Court said were then drafted into actual documents or into the legislative action to form SITLA. This is some of the things that the Supreme Court said. Beneficiaries do not include other governmental institutions, the public at large, or the general welfare of the state. Our bosses are the beneficiaries, the 12 of them. Public school kids, University of Utah, Utah State, School of Blind, judiciary, whatever that judiciary one was, reservoirs, I mean, it's 12 of them. And they fall under the trust law. According to what our attorneys tell us, trust law beneficiaries are of a higher standard than normal legislative action. Now, this is confusing, and I know it is. It's taken me four years and still haven't gotten it. But the beneficiaries fall under the fiduciary responsibility of the trust. And what they say goes. I have to please 12 beneficiaries. And if I don't get market value out of my oil and gas, or out of my real estate, or out of my right-of-ways, a beneficiary who is the owner of that land has the pure prerogative of suing me. Now, I haven't been sued in four years. My predecessor was sued because he thought he was getting a balanced deal, but apparently he didn't check the boxes on everything he was supposed to do. And he was sued. And that beneficiary won. And that beneficiary was able to claim down the damages, even though my predecessor was in good judgment. He was not trying to be prejudiced. He just goofed up somewhere. That's what I'm responsible doing, is checking the boxes off and making sure that every piece of property I sell, whether it's either under an auction, a public auction, or a negotiated sale, under a negotiated sale, it still goes to the public for three weeks in some kind of a public hearing or a public advertisement on the YouTube or whatever it might be. Every piece of property we sell has the opportunity of the public to bid on it. Everyone. That's the box we check. And so when someone says you didn't get fair market value out of this piece of property, we have one bid under negotiated sale. We go to the public. We advertise. One piece of property that we didn't sell went worldwide for three weeks. Wall Street Journal, everything else we could think about for three weeks. We received a couple of offers, but just tire kickers and nothing else. Piece of property that's close to us around here went into the public arena for three weeks under public notification, under the public media here. And so everything that we do, the beneficiaries are looking over our shoulder on. A fiduciary duty, a duty of utmost good faith, trust, confidence, and owned by the trustees to the beneficiaries. Go to the next one, please. Undebutted loyalty, good faith, act with due diligence, care. You can read it on the board yourself there. The fund started out in 1994 at $50 million. One of the reasons why it was so low in 1994 is there were too many good old boy deals given in the previous 100 years. For us to haven't been in existence since 1894 and only have $50 million in 100 years was a disgrace. And there were many people that had their fingers in the till. In 94, with $50 million, there were lots of checks and balances put in place so that I, as a director, could not give a good deal to somebody even if I wanted to. Because I have to have my board sign off. And the beneficiaries have the final say as to whether they want to sue me or not if they think that I have been neglect in publishing or in negotiating a deal. So one way or another, I'm hamstrung. I'm torn in about four different directions. But today, we have over $2.5 billion. Since 1994, tonight now, that's a lot of increase. You'd think that was a lot of money until you look at New Mexico, who has $40 billion in theirs. Texas has like $45 or $50 billion in their trust fund. Our goal is to try and get this as quick as possible to about $3.5 billion. That way, there'll be about $125 to $150 million a year coming back to the students in the state of Utah. That starts to be some real serious money. It takes the pressure off the legislature. And the WPU, they have to come up with every year. But even more importantly, it's the teachers and the parents that decide where that money is going to go. And if you can put another $15 to $20 per person in the classroom at the disposal of being able to buy more books or whatever it might be, even wheelchairs, let them have that decision. And so that's why SITLA is as aggressive as we are in many different ways. But at the same time, we have to be fair to the public and also have to realize we do have a partnership with people. I just saw the numbers last night in an email. In this next year, instead of having $82.6 million, it'll be $88.5 million, I believe, will be distributed to the schools in 2021. So that's a jump of $6 million going to the classroom. We think it'll jump proportionally every year, $8 to $10 million to where we'll be making a bigger effect on the classroom every year. So with that... Oh, there's one more thing. Go to the next slide. What I mainly would like to show to you is down at the bottom there. With 3.4 million acres of ground, we do not have enough staff members to really ride and take control of our property. We have a lot of abuse. A lot of people will throw the trash outs that are taken to the landfill. Some people up in Utah County will pull their televisions out, their refrigerators out, take up on our property and do their target practicing. Of which, we work very closely with county commissioners up in Utah County, and they have dedicated two different days with all of their dump trucks and their front-end loaders to come in and pick it all up under Lake Mountain. This autumn one right here was just recently pulled out of, it's called Halfway Canyon in the Uenah Basin, of which Anadarko and the county commissioners and county employees went up there, spent a full day with front-end loaders, with skid loaders, with dump trucks. Probably more anything. There were about 25 to 30 people using elbow grease to pull the Graviti off the walls, off the rock walls. I would just ask that we need to work together, if you could, to help us police our own property. By us putting into place developments like the solar field, or gravel pits, or even houses, or whatever it might be, it definitely adds to your tax base. I have seen the numbers and the solar field and the windmill in Beaver County has added over $1 million of taxes to the coffers in Beaver County every year. Now, that was the county. That was the school districts. That was special service districts and anything else into the political subdivision. Now, a million bucks a year to Beaver County is a lot of money, just like a million bucks here would be a lot of money here. Both of you are not boozing out with dollar bills coming out underneath the cracks in the doors. And so we try and put in place economic development for you guys so you can have a tax base, so you can raise the level of government here. So with that, commissioners, that's the end of my PowerPoint. I appreciate everything that you have been working with us on. And if there's something I can do to help you, feel free to. If the two of you have any questions for me, I'd love to take them.
I do.
Mr. Adams?
You gave us a check for $224,000 today. And this is state pilt. I know we get federal pilt also for the 3 million acres of land that the federal government owns. You're paying us 86 cents an acre. I just want to point out that the federal government's paying us just over 50 cents an acre.
May I bring one more thing here?
Sure.
The 86 cents per acre that we are paying you is three times the green belt average of the state of Utah. Now, let me explain that so I'm not trying to lead you astray. Up in Tremont, where they're growing sugar beets or growing corn or whatever it might be, they might be, their green belt assessment there might be 50 cents or 60 cents an acre. But the average across the state of Utah, where like the 225,000 acres of SITLA land here, I'm betting 90% of that is about as bare as the floor we're standing on. And so you're probably only receiving 24 or 25 cents on that. So I'm saying that the 86 cents is more than three times the state average that is paid for green belt. So I hope to clarify. I'm not picking and choosing my numbers. I've given you the whole picture. So that's, yes, that's right, Commissioner.
So we receive this money, and it comes without any restrictions, right? We can put it in our general fund, and we can spend it on providing services to our citizens.
Wherever the three of you want it to go.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. I think it's helpful to those who are here today. And appreciate your sharing some of your money with San Juan County. We have a lot of public land. And we look at this as your payment in lieu of taxes in San Juan County because you own that land. And we just, I just went back to DC a couple of weeks ago encouraging the federal government to pay their tax bill next year. So we appreciate you paying your tax bill and helping us so that we can provide those services that we need to.
There's one more clarifying message I'd like to give. Many people will become confused about SITLA land versus public land. The way the Supreme Court made the statement in that lawsuit I brought up, they classified SITLA land as "like unto private." Now, whatever that says, your guess is as good as mine. I don't think it's as good as private, but it sure isn't public. And though we allow trails to go across our property, providing they're established with us in an orderly fashion, we're not trying to kick the public off necessarily. But there comes a time when we have to use the land for a higher, better use. And that's becoming extremely more difficult the more the public is on our land. I learned back when I first entered the legislature that open space, dirty fingernails, and grass growing up is as important to the sound, emotional stability of mankind as bread and water. You have to have something in your hand. That's one of the reasons why in Watts or some of the other places in New York where all you have is asphalt and cement, that's why they grow pigeons. That's why they have their own little planters up in their balconies. Growing, playing with dirt and grass is an essential part. We understand that. My board understands that. But also know that it's likened to private. And we can use it to a higher and better use for what it's being used for if we have that opportunity. So, Commissioner, if you have anything else more for me?
Yes, thank you for the check. Appreciate it. And all the related work that has been done. It sounds like, sort of like a bull situation where you don't consider the feeling, the psychological components of the relationship between the public and the safety net that is built around your program. That's the way I would see it. In terms of how public relation seems to be not being heard, it's been sort of like bulldozed. In one situation that I see. Very persuasive, yes. I guess if you have the money and buy your way around, so to speak, that's the type of reflection that I receive in terms of how the state has recognized you, put you aside with specific authority. Not like you said, BLM, government land, public land. It's, how do you deal with it?
I, I'm trying to choose my words very carefully, Commissioner, so that I'm not going to offend anybody in the room. But when I say that we're likened to private lands, I believe that most everything that we have done here in San Juan County has gone before you as county commissioners and has gone before planning commissions. And public hearings have been had. And we are at the state of the game that we are right now. I live in Summit County, which is a very controversial county when it comes to any type of planning and zoning. But even up in Summit County, as tough as they are to do development up there, they have come up with a kind of a saying to people who are criticizing the next-door neighbor for putting a house or putting an industrial park on his land. If you want to control that property, then you have to come to the table with some money. And when we have put our development property up for a public bid or up for a negotiated sale where anybody could have bid on to match the competing bid by $1, I don't know how much more we can do. I have beneficiaries looking over my shoulder. And I can tell you, I know that if I were to kill a deal because of public pressure, my beneficiaries will have my job. I can just tell you that. But at the same time, I think that we have tried to be very fair. You as commissioners have had everything laid out in front of you as to what we are proposing. And there are as many people for or against some of the things that we're doing right now. And so what am I to do if I am likened to private property? That's where I'm stuck at. Planning and zoning, okayed, what we were thinking about. And I also believe you as commissioners have said you're in favor of some of the things that we're doing. I don't know where else I can go. I will tell you this, that over the last three months, there have been over an hour and a half of public testimony taken from our board in our board meetings from the public, and majority of them are down in this area. And they've received the same answer every time. It may not be the answer they liked, but it was the answer that I am required to give according to our Constitution and the Enabling Clause and also our legislation. So, Commissioner, I don't know where else to go.
Thank you. With that, those are just, if I allow... With that, uh, those are just, uh, if I allow other questions, uh, a little bit, uh, can I warn, so I would like to, uh, not allow the public to
Oh, not pose question. Did you say allow us to, or not?
No. Thank you. Um, next, briefing about San Juan County budget and presentation, per, prepare, preparation plan. Mr. Nielsen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, I guess we're just gonna talk about the, the process that we have gone through, uh, in the past uh, related to, um, creating a budget for, for the next year. Um, the, the, the process, uh, usually starts around, around the first of, of October, first part of October. Um, and what, and what I've done in the past is send to all department heads, um, an email that, that gives them, uh, a worksheet where they can write down, um, their, their anticipated income revenue for, for the, for the following year. Another sheet that, that shows, uh, that gives them the, the chance to, to write down the employees, uh, what the benefits are, what their pay is. Um, and also a budget worksheet which is, is specific to their departments where they can see, uh, spending wise where they're at through about three quarters of the year. Um, and that allows them to, to go through and, and create a proposed budget for their, for their department for, for the following year. Once they've done that, um, then they, then they will turn those sheets back into myself. Um, and we will, we'll create a preliminary budget. Um, after that preliminary budget is created, uh, we usually have a, uh, department head meeting with, with the commissioners where each department head comes in, um, and, and we talk about their proposed budget, uh, what, what they've requested and it's kind of a question and answer period to find out what their needs are and maybe why they've requested certain things. Uh, after that point, um, there's more discussion usually, um, to, to kind of shore up, um, e- expenses and anticipated expenses, um, other anticipated revenue and, and kind of firming up the, the budget even more. Uh, finally, we, we have a, uh, have a public hearing which we've held in the past, first part of December where, where we allow the public to, to come, um, with any questions that they have about the budget. And, and talk about the, kind of the, the, the reasons why the, the budget was created in, in the way that it was. Um, and then at the end of the year, after, after all the discussions happen, um, then the commission approves the budget for the following year. So that, that's kind of the process that we have followed in the past and, and will, and will do so again this year. Did you have any questions?
The, uh, combined meeting, elect the officials and what, seven and eight, these are optional?
Right, so the, yeah, this is just a, it's a schedule that I just put together, um, which is, it's not set in stone. Uh, we, we usually work around department head schedules. Some of them may not be able to, to come in at the time that, that I had put them down. Anyway, we just, we kind of work around that.
Good point.
Well, one thing I might say, Willie, the proposed schedule in November, meeting with each ma, each department head and receiving their budget requests, that's, those are meetings that, that the commissioners need to be present at if they're gonna, if they're gonna make an informed decision. Okay, I didn't know if you-
Raise questions.
Good, alright.
Right, yeah, ready to raise questions and, and, and find out maybe the reasons why, why certain things were requested and asked.
Receive justification?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that's, that's the reason I wasn't too sure if these, if they become a conflict with the schedule mine or Mr. Mayor boy.
Yeah, we can, we can change.
Yeah, we can change it. And then, and again, this is just-
That's what I was-
Yeah.
Yep.
Proposed with the-
Okay. Long's, uh, if something comes up, then we can reschedule.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm also on the, on the agenda for the, for the next item, the briefing on potential property tax increases. Um, and so, so part of the budgeting process each year is to, is, is to go over, um, expenses and revenue and, and kind of where the county is with, with their budgets and with the, in the, in their funds and, and try and make sure that there's enough money that, so that we're operating, um, with, with the money that we have. Um, and given some, some of the, uh, updates that we've gotten from, from John Pellet, um, where we've talked about, um, kind of the state of the county and where our budgets are, um, it has, it has been talked about or proposed that, that there might be a possible property tax increase for the year 2020. Um, and, and so I guess we just have a, have a discussion, uh, about potential, um,
Increase?
Potential increases to, to the, to the general fund. The library has also made a request to have an increase for, uh, to, to their fund as, as well as public health. Um, I think, uh, John Pellet is here, um, with, with some more information. So if, if you have any specific questions, I'm sure he would be happy to, to answer those. Um, but part, part of this, um, that there is a, there is a schedule that, and, uh, of dates and that, that we need to follow i- if, if this is something that the commission is going to approve. Um, and, and, and one of the, one of the first things is that we need to announce in a public meeting if there is, that we are going to increase taxes, the proposed amount, um, the proposed, um, what is it, the, the proposed rate and, and a reason why the, why we're doing that. Um, that, that isn't necessarily what we're, what we're doing here today, um, just more of a, of a, of a discussion, um, of why.
The, um, question I have is, uh, we, um, working with the projection or
With-
real dollars in the, in the bank?
Uh, as, as far as the in, uh, coming up with an increase?
Preparation of the budget.
Um, I, that would, I guess that would depend on if there, if it's decided that, that there should be an increase.
Um, No, that, that, not the increase. Are we working with projected budget, anticipated revenue or the actual dollars in the bank? That's what I'm asking.
For, when we're creating the budget?
Yeah.
Um, we, with both, um, I mean, we, the, the, we have an, an idea of where, of where the funds are at, how much money is in them, but we also have a projection of, of anticipated revenue that we take into consideration.
Okay.
It's been, it's been my understanding in the past years, Willie, we're creating a budget based on projected revenues that will come in during that year. And, and you know, it, it includes a variety of all kinds of revenue, including Pilt and, and those kind of things. But we, we don't, we don't base our budget based on what we have in the bank right now. We base our budget on what we think are the projected revenues that will come in. I, John might, I don't, he might want to clarify what I'm saying, but I think that-
The other thing is, I, I understand-
Okay.
It's based on projection. The other thing is what happens to unspent fiscal year money? Do we carry over or do we withdraw and have a party?
John, I don't know, John David can answer that?
He, he, it just carries over. It, it just, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's all in the one fund and just-
So, you don't know exactly how much of a carryover you can have by the end of fiscal year? So how can you include that in the budget?
Uh, well, uh, yeah, we, we don't know how much of the carryover there is because, I mean, there, there are always, there always seem to be and unanticipated expenses that come up, um, things we don't count on, um.
So, the, the, my recommendation, my recommendation is if you don't know what the, uh, budget balance will be in certain accounts, you can't include it in the, in the budget preparation for the fiscal year, then an amendment to the budget would be in order.
Correct.
That way you can include that into your fiscal year. That's the way I, I would, uh, work it.
Correct, and, and at the end of the year, when, when we're approving of the, the next year's budget, we're also possibly amending this year's budget to make sure, um, that, that it is, that it balances at, at the end of the year.
Okay. Now, back to the, uh, possible increase.
Sure.
Uh, what do you call it, tax? What is the, uh, the basis for increase?
The basis for the increase, um, the, that there are, there are some funds that are, that are not, they're not operating, um, in the, in the red, or in, sorry, in the black. And, and so the county, the county does, um, kind of supplement those funds. And so part of, part of the, the reason for the increase is to kind of help that. Um, we also have the, the, uh, litigation, the, the cost of the, of litigation, which needs to be taken into consideration. Um, that the payment next year, I think, for that settlement is one point three million and then two hundred thousand thereafter until year seven. Um, the, 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 the library, um, Pat has, has mentioned the, the reasons why they're, um, why they would like an increase. And I know that, um, that public health, um, also ha, has mentioned, um, the, that they would like an increase so that they would be able to, um, operate on, on public funds rather than, than a greater percentage of public funds rather than, than grants and have more, um, have it be more Commissioner, that way.
This is a song?
It is not.
Do you want to use this one?
If I may just add, um, to some of John's comments, um, particularly with the, um, remaining funds that we typically have in a, a county budget. There are specific funds, um, that our budget is comprised of. For example, we have, um, class road B funds, uh, in our public works. Um, a lot of times those funds, uh, will have several millions of dollars, uh, that are sitting in those accounts that will not be spent, uh, within the fiscal year that we're working and operating in. Uh, it takes, um, multiple millions of dollars on these road improvements, um, flood control projects, things like that. And so you accumulate funds within, um, specific accounts and, and those funds can only be spent within those specific accounts as well. And so you may see, uh, that accumulation that you're talking about, uh, that has to be carried over to the next year. Um, but with these, with this specific request here, we've had, um, multiple, um, requests, not only from the department heads, um, and, and mind you, this is, this is probably my second full day here on the job, but, uh, things that I'm hearing have, and I was forewarned and coming into this, to this position that, um, the library board, uh, is, is requesting additional funds and needs additional funds to operate. And, and that's a, a big component throughout, uh, not only the library system here in the county, but, um, service, servicing all, uh, public. The health department is also, uh, another taxing entity that has requested, um, additional, uh, funds to this increase. Um, as well as some of the shortfalls, um, coming into this position. Uh, typically what we read is, is there financial statements, financial audits that have taken place in the county. And as I read through that, um, clearly it indicated several areas that we continue, um, year after year to run in a deficit manner. Uh, so you have to either loan, uh, take money from addition, other funds to loan to another fund or, uh, you run this deficit and, and that's, you're not supposed to be able to run a deficit, um, in our fund accounting. And so part of that is, is showing up these accounts as well as why, um, the increase is being requested.
Well, uh, toward quarterly, uh, we reviewing budget quarterly. Those, uh, measurements should be in place and then, uh, amendments, budget revision, uh, transfers, release of funds, uh, coordinated effort, you know, in order to, uh, liquidate those deficits by the end of the year, hopefully. If, if not done, then what do we do? That would be a type of, uh, funds management plan that I would like to see rather than having a program run to deficit and unable to reach out to the other, or that way we don't create a large, um, carryover. So, if we carry over, then there should be a lot of questions to that.
Yes, correct, and, and you do, um, you do have that oversight of the budget. And I, I've noticed staff, um, have passed out the budget sheets to you, at least in the budget in the last meeting where you have that opportunity to review and, and we'll also strengthen that a little more with, um, check receipts, things like that, that the commissioner, um, will be approving here in the future. Um, but I think, you know, do, do understand and know that, that you, it is your responsibility to oversee those expenditures and that's why we bring these items to you on the agenda is either through contracts or, or through approvals and resolutions. Um, whatever the case is, um, you'll, you'll see today on the agenda, you know, we've got a, a line item request for, um, for the approval for the windows. Now, this is something that's been budgeted and talked about in the past. And now that, that job is coming to fruition to where we need to make sure that, uh, the funds are- uh, the funds are appropriated wisely, uh, to that project. And so you see that, um, as your responsibility, you'll continue to see that come to you with these budget changes. We do ask, and it is typical of our, our county employees to go through and, um, it is, you know, director, department heads, their fiduciary responsibility to manage their budgets wisely, uh, to look for opportunities to, um, save funds. And, and those funds that are unspent can then, uh, carry over to the next year. Um, some of the concerns that, that I see, just, you know, within my, my short span here, is, um, we've got a lot of good people, a lot of good county employees wearing a lot of different hats. And, and so when you, when you have multiple employees that have three or four, um, job duties, job functions, it makes it difficult for them, uh, they can do kind of everything good, but they can't do everything well. Uh, just because there's just not enough time in their day. And so it, it's, it's measuring and then looking at all of those resources that we have available and how do we, um, how do we take care of the county business for the public and meet the public's needs as well? Um, you know, for example, we've got the liaison with the Forest Service. Uh, that's, that's an important role that we have. Um, but one of the things that, that we don't have, that, you know, may be a future request and something that we need to entertain, the liaison with, uh, the Navajo Nation. Uh, it's making sure that, that we have these inroads into, um, to our partners that, that surround us. And so it's giving those opportunities like that that we're looking at.
Okay. Is that, or do you have-
No, not unless there are any other, any other questions.
No. Any more?
It might be-
Mr. Adam has a question.
It might be good to go over the, um, implications of the tax increase on the homeowner and, and just in a scenario. Looks like you've prepared a scenario for increasing 250, 500, 750 or a million dollars?
Right, and, and so, well, yeah, what we have is a scenario where, where we have an increase of, like you mentioned, 250, 500, 750, um, and, and this is the total amount of, of an increase, me, meaning would it include the, the general fund, uh, the library and the public health all up into one? Um, and, and we, and we did the, the implication on, ba, based on a $200,000, um, residence. Um, now, for, for those who, who, who have their home as a primary residence, the, they, they do, there is a discount to it, to everyone, um, of, of 45%. So, if, for, for an example, um, we, we assumed a $500,000 increase to the county in taxes, um, the, the implication, um, on, on a homeowner whose, whose residence was $200,000 would be about, um, $69.08 of an increase over, over, over this year.
That's their total tax bill, right?
That, that is just from the county, that there are other, um-
Right, but that's-
Taxing entities.
That's, that's a yearly increase, not a monthly or-
That is, that is a manual increase.
Weekly or-
Yep.
So that represents a 17% increase in a, in a homeowner's bill for the year.
For the year, from, from San Juan County, yeah. But, but we can't predict what the school district or the cities will do.
Understand that, we're just talking county.
Right.
So, um, the same, same would happen for, no, uh, on a commercial, a 17% increase on a business would be about $314 for the year.
Right, and then, and that was, and in this spreadsheet, we're guessing a $500,000 value of the business.
Okay.
No question?
Question?
Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Next would be, uh, general plan update discussion, Mr. Mac McDonald. You're on.
All right, I'm sure, just let's see here. So lastly, just kind of give you an update where, where this is coming from. So, um, you can kind of understand a little bit of the background behind this. We have received, uh, two requests from outside partners to, uh, actually rescind, um, the San Juan County Resource Management Plan. Um, I had asked to, just to hold off at least so that I could, um, look at and familiarize myself with the actual resource management plan itself and what it all encompassed, um, especially for San Juan County. After, after reviewing it, uh, noticing that, um, the resource management plan is actually included in, uh, and has been adopted within our general plan for the county, which had gone through an update back in, I believe it was December of 2018, was when it was, um, amended and, and placed on prior to that, that the plan, um, the study and everything had actually taken place in 2017. Specific to the plan, I think it's important to note, and I'm going to read, um, right from the plan itself. Um, the plan, when you have a general plan, uh, in here, and it's, it states it eloquently in here, "It's to ensure that San Juan County general plan functions to meet the needs that will be reviewed and updated at least annually or more frequently as the need arises to provide responsible and well-formulated public policy direction to county decisions." And I want to highlight that, the word "public policy" in there. Um, "As also anticipated, the plan will be updated and revised as circumstances change, new data becomes available and new challenges and opportunities arise. The process for amending the plan is outlined in Utah state law, county ordinance as it requires, adequately noticed public hearings and formal action by the county officials." Um, typically what I've seen, uh, it's kind of common as new commissioners come on board, uh, there's a change of leadership. Uh, you would review the, the goals and, um, opportunities that we have in budgeting, things like that. And, and this is that document that's formulated to help provide that vision and the goals. With that, keep in mind that this process has been undertaken throughout the years as, has been a heavily, um, public engaging process. We had hired consultants in the past that have helped develop this, uh, where they have gone out, um, reading through here real quickly. Uh, they had gone out and in that public process, they held open houses. Um, they have, um, had a survey that was advertised online. They also had a paper survey that they handed out in meetings to receive public input. Um, they had also captured that public input in this document. So you can actually go through and read that, that public participants that had emailed their public comments into it. And similar, um, with the resource management plan. So mind you, that both of these plans are required by law, state law, that, that we have that. And so when first approached initially to rescind, uh, the resource management plan, uh, it's, it's something that you cannot rescind because it's a requirement to have. And so with that, knowing that, um, the documents themselves allow for the amendment of that plan, um, that's why I put this, uh, on the agenda date to discuss, you know, is there that willingness from, from the body, um, to actually go through and amend this plan? And what does that amendment look like? Uh, the resource management plan, uh, similar a, as the, the general plan, it mentions the same thing, that this is, this is a public-facing, uh, document. This is created by the public that tells, um, not only state and federal government what it is that the public wishes to see and how those resources are supposed to be managed. And so to me, I, I love these type of plans because it's, it's more of a bottom-up approach where, uh, the public has their input and offers guidance to the state and the federal government, how we want things managed, the resources managed here in San Juan County. And so, but time and time, like it states, that these do need to be updated. And with that, um, looking through, uh, just some of the, the public comments on here, you know, you had, um, an extensive, I don't know if all be thorough, um, public participation. Um, but there, the attempts were made, um, to include, uh, the public in here. You had, um, you know, several of the comments that come through that were attached through there shows me that they, they tried to be as widespread as possible. And maybe they didn't reach all of, uh, the public. One of the things is, I looked through here, I couldn't see really that chapter engagement, um, that, that we would have liked to see, but not being here, I really can't speak to how or how thorough that, that public involvement and public engagement really was. But, um, kind of what I'm hoping in this discussion is from you is to just get that, um, you know, what is it we would like to see as we look at amending this? Is it amending the general plan along with the, the resource management plan? Is it, would you like to see a consulting firm? I can go out and get, uh, three bids to, to see how much that will cost. It's simply, we don't have the staff, uh, to go through an extensive public process. But, um, it's something we can look on, look at, uh, the cost to do that and see, um, stacking resources, what we can do on those amendments or opening that up to the public process again. Um, it's kind of looking to see how you want, um, want me to, to go about, um, these amendments. I, for me, you know, just, just, just to speak out my process, I'd like to go through and just, um, not only be educated on the plan, but look for those opportunities for efficiency and not only just in our government, um, but what is that, um, that communication? What does the communication look like with our partners? Uh, Sitla, you know, you had that presentation here, that concern, you know, that public engagement process with them, is that something that we can improve on in our plan? So that it speaks a little bit more louder and then clearly, uh, to, to our state partners, um, what, what we would like to see.
As, as I understand, uh, that resource management plan, San Juan County Resource Management Plan was adopted 2018?
I, I think, I think the actual signing of the document was July of '27?
Yes, that was, so you have a resolution that's a part of it that was adopted and approved in 2017. Uh, I think that the general plan had some amendments that took place in, in 2018.
Yeah, okay.
And so I- So, so both of them, uh, or reviewed any of it?
They should be, these are, these are the public's vision of how the county should operate and function, so, yeah.
So, here in 2019, uh, I think needs to be reviewed.
Okay. We could certainly do that. So, would you like us to review the, the entire general plan with the resource management plan? So, here for example, in the resource management plan, it, it talks about Bear's Ear specifically in here. And this is just something I'm, I'm pulling out that I reviewed last night. Um, you didn't have, you know, it had just kind of left everything open, acknowledging that something is going to happen with Bear's Ear. And so things like that, you know, we know what's happened now. We can change and make sure those modifications reflect the current status and current situations of these areas. And, and that's more specific to the resource, um, management plan itself, but, um, things have changed since, since July of 2017.
Both documents need to be reviewed.
Okay.
As I heard this morning that, uh, Mr. President's move to dismiss Bear's Ear's case was rejected by the judge.
Okay.
Full force forward to, uh, possibly reestablish the original.
Okay, okay.
In that sense, uh, those documents need to be reviewed instead of amended. Uh, those documents as recommended, I think it's, uh, just have to do, create new protocols for the two, so to speak.
Yeah, so on here, what we do, we don't, you never want to go backwards.
Yeah.
Especially with the public, where you had the public participation. And I think it's, they're responsible of us to, to build on the plan that's there and modify and change it, you know, as new goals, um, come into place. Um, we can come through and, and try to capture, um, the new commissioner's vision, um, as a body. We can, you know, capture your new vision and then reach back out to the public, community, uh, to make sure, um, they're seeing that same vision, that they agree with the vision. We can also, um, get more visioning, uh, statements from the public as well and try to capture, you know, where we at today, um, with that, with the, with the changes that we're well aware of. Uh, just know that we currently do not have any funds to update this. So it may be a budget request that you'll see, uh, kind of, it will be a budget request, um, here in the future that you'll see probably with the new, new budget that'll come forth. But I'll go through and at least, I'd like to, to reach back out to the consultant that, um, initially took us through this process, see if we can get some, uh, a cheaper rate from them because they should hopefully know, understand San Juan County and, and still know that process that they had undergone. And we'll, we'll get two, uh, their comparative bids just to see, uh, make sure that, that they're responsive in their, their quotes as well, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and kind of a segue into, to the next item. Um, you know, Nick has done a great job, uh, reviewing, um, the, the new Forest Service changes that they have in the LaSalle Plan. Um, this kind of, they coordinate with one another. So that resource management plan, what, what Nick would do is, is take, um, that visioning statement from that resource management plan as he reviews, um, the Forest Service changes and plans. Then he would be looking to see how that complements that resource management plan. So that's how important, uh, it is to get this plan right. You know, it kind of gives our staff, um, that visiting statement. So as we look at, you know, National Forest Service changes or whatever the case is, uh, state level, um, federal level, that they're consistent with what, um, our public, you know, what our citizens here in the county would like to see with the management of those lands. So that's how important it is to have these documents right.
Okay.
So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, public land update discussion, Mr. Sandberg.
Good morning. Is this one working or do I need to hold on to this?
That's for the live feed. This isn't for the room.
So use this, all right. Well, last week, we had the Forest Service give us a presentation on their draft forest management plan. And this is basically a courtesy review that we have now for two weeks, which began last week. Courtesy reviews of cooperating agencies, of which San Juan County is one, can make some suggestions to this draft before the Forest Service gets this ready to put it out to the public sometime later this fall. And also last week, I attended a cooperating agency workshop in Price, uh, to discuss this, this plan and, and made some comments there. But the, the comment period they've allowed us is, actually closes next Monday. So they would like to have any comments we've got by next Monday. And so what I've done, I did go through and- And so what I've done, I did go through and review that plan. And I'll make some comments for your consideration, they're basically in that first section of the document, and it's by line and page number as they, as they request it. Now, anyone picking up materials for Commissioner Mary Boy today? Can I leave that with you, Mac? That'd be his copy. So as you flip through this, you can see that I've made various comments on certain sections of the plan. And also included with that are some maps that you may or may not have in that copy of the draft plan that you received from the Forest Service last week. So these, these maps that are attached may help you to understand some of the comments that I've made in that document. So basically, I'll leave that, that document with you for your consideration. I would like to be able to submit these comments to the Forest Service by next Monday. So that's basically all I have, have for you this morning.
Is that the Forest Service deadline is next Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have also through the, through the next few days or today.
If I may just check real quick on, on that deadline, I did reach out to the Forest Service just knowing that all three commissioners were at conferences last week and really wouldn't have a significant amount of time to review the document in its entirety. I had requested an extension date on that, and so Megan with the Forest Service and I'd also CCD on this email, she had communicated that as they're receiving these comments from the public agencies, that it'll be some time in compiling that information as well. So they were willing to extend that time an additional week. So we'll be able to get this, have a thorough review of the document itself, and so I encourage you all to go through it. And then we can provide, Nick's done a great job and I kind of held him back on this review. We wanted to take it for approval today, but I just know that where we were gone, it just wasn't enough time, or we just received it last Tuesday, and so they're willing to give us that opportunity to continue review for, for additional two weeks. I believe that October 15th, it would be enough time as they compile that, their documentations from the other public entities. I believe there's five counties that are participating in this document.
I think that's right, as well as Montezola City and Blanning City.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So there'll be a lot of things that they'll have to incorporate into those and then review on there, and so it gives us enough time before this actually goes out in November, and so if I let off, we'll be fine.
Okay.
David, thank you.
So, October 14th.
Alright, and the next commission meeting is when? I didn't have my calendar before.
15th, I think, followed it.
So this would be, would have our comments ready to submit prior to next commission meeting.
Correct, hopefully. The comments will be due on the 14th.
So if we can get it, we can get it anytime.
Yeah.
Okay, it'll be on the agenda on the 15th.
Alright. That's the end of the work meeting, I believe. Now we start the commission meeting. If there's any other items to, for discussion. Okay. The 11 o'clock, it says, I don't know what time it is.
11:23.
We're after?
It's 11:20.
Overwork session time. Let me realize. Okay, there's a sin. We ask for forgiveness. Who do we ask?
You're forgiven.
Went over. With that, we'll just go ahead and continue the commission meeting. At this time, we'd like to have Mayor Lyman, City of Blanning, provide the, Walter.
Thank you. I need to be going pretty quick, so I'll just take a minute and I'll run out. I just wanted to give, just say a couple of things about our community and thanks to the commission for coming to meet here. I'm always honored to, any public process that seeks to do more, engage the people in their, in self-government is, to me, is a good idea. Way back, long time ago, my great-grandfather, Walter Seelyman, who's known as the founder of the community, had a vision for a community here, and there were several elements of that vision that were quite significant, but I wanted to mention them just too often. One of them, he envisioned a tunnel coming through the mountain up here to deliver water up onto this mesa, which has no natural water source, because we're on a mesa up above the streams. And the other one that I wanted to mention was that he envisioned a center for education, particularly involving Native Americans in the education, and this would be a focal point for that. And the way the tunnel evolved over this period of 30 years, my great-grandfather, followed by my grandfather, along with Bradford and dozens of other people, Native and Anglo alike, finally succeeded in getting that altered the mountain, without which we would not be here. We simply would not have the water resource available or even have a community significantly considered. So what it was, was a combination of a lot of people working cooperatively together to accomplish an amazing thing, to make things better. Now, as far as the vision for a center of education and more specifically, Native American education, I submit to you this campus. This campus is absolutely a miracle for this to exist in a community of our size as remote as we are. The high school, the junior high, middle school, whatever, the grade schools in our community are around about 35 to 50% Native and the balance Anglo. So this vision has come to pass, that this will be the center for education here in Blanning. And again, we look at the success of this campus, I was visiting with Chris Chenolson the other night, and he was telling me how unique this truly is. There are, there are small colleges and universities across the country who seek to particularly engage the Native American population, and they are receiving awards if they can get 5% of enrollment of their students to be Native, 5%. This campus with hundreds of students is 65% Native American. It's an astounding thing. It's unprecedented anywhere in the United States of America. Once again, people coming together and working cooperatively to accomplish something quite amazing and unique, to make things better. And spinning off from this college in great majorities in healthcare, this has become a real center for healthcare, and it would not be what it is if we weren't for the input of the college funneling expertise into that area, providing the resource and the indication for it to function in healthcare. So we have this brand-new UNHS clinic down here. It's an amazing thing. A combination of people working cooperatively to get there to do an amazing and wonderful thing. The hospital across the street is a combination of Anglo, Ute, and Navajo communities who pulled together to create that hospital in the first place. And so there's a tradition of this, going all the way back to the founding of this community, and that's, that is who we are. And are we a finished product? No, we're not. We can always, we can always keep working, we can always look for ways to improve, we can always look for better ways to serve our residents here. But I walk around in the community and I see the retail store, I see Harvard, I see the restaurants, the motels, the sea stores, even the construction companies, the service industry, and what I see is not what is portrayed out there in the public. What I see is employees in these, all of these businesses in our community are about 50/50, Native and Anglo. The customers that are local, they're about 50/50, Native and Anglo. I just came from the grocery store and I just saw this. What I see here is not, is not what Blanning gets portrayed out there in the media. We're a diverse and prosperous community that works together to accomplish great things. And I hope that that's how we can see ourselves and continue to try to make, to make that even better as we move forward. But again, thanks for holding the commission meeting here. I like the idea of trying to further engage the public, to give them an opportunity to more easily be aware of how the county government works, to observe it, to get involved with it, to have their voice heard in the governance of their county. And I do have somebody that's waiting for me, I have an appointment that I absolutely have to run to, you can't, you can't keep going without me. And so with that, welcome to Blanning. I understand, we are always welcome to your work meetings if there's things of particular interest to Blanning. If there were a number of agenda items that we could have a joint meeting, that would be great, but we understand we can always, and you're welcome to ours, you know, if we're having, if we have stuff on our agenda that's particularly related to the county, you know, come and engage, let's have a conversation and keep things going and try to do good things here in San Juan County, so thank you.
Thank you. Before you run off, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, I think the only way to quash those negative remarks and stories about the negativity of the planning would be to invite those Native American communities. You have one across the wash here, the other one down the road, and those people would be, I think, would, would change the story positively. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just want to say, San Juan County has valued the college here greatly too, and at one time I believed that the county made a grant of $500,000 to the scholarship fund. I didn't know, I thought you might mention that, but since you didn't, I'm going to mention that San Juan County did donate $500,000 to the, to the scholarship fund when, in the early stages of the, of the college being developed here.
Thank you.
Graduates from this university also are teachers at NADSA. Next item would be opening, prayer, any volunteer? Thank you. Young lady over there?
Our dear Father, we're so very grateful for the opportunity that we have to gather here to be as citizens of Blanning and citizens of this great county, please be with us as we speak and make decisions that we can do things that are best for this county. Please help to keep us safe and protected and to do our best to look over our lands and our people. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Appreciate it, thank you. Next is the minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 17th as well as the special meeting on September 24th.
Okay. I'll just turn around plot-wise and second that. Alders, any questions? No question? Alders say aye.
Aye.
Turned favors or opposed? Next is public comments. I guess some comments who bore San Juan County Commission. Please complete the request form. They're available at the lead, they're already submitted.
Yeah, first would be Travis Summers, followed by Carolyn Daly.
Travis Summer.
Travis is later on on the agenda. Okay, recommendation is?
Let me put you a little later then.
Okay, Carolyn Daly?
Shall I sit here or does it matter? Where's the microphone?
I'd say up there, that's the live feed. That doesn't do anything in this room.
Good morning Commissioners and Mr. McDonald, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Carolyn Daly from Spanish Valley, and I want the Commissioners and the people of Blanning to know that we really appreciate what the Commission has done for us in Spanish Valley by passing the temporary moratorium in the highway commercial zone and higher in landmark design to give us sorely needed planning for the development coming to our area. I had a longer thank you speech planned, but I am curtailing that to respectfully disagree with Mr. Here on several points he made. There was no public hearing ever held whatsoever before they decided to sell this parcel of land he referred to, to the Loves Corporation for a truck stop in Moab Valley. It was only advertised in the Saltland Tribune and the San Juan Record. It was not advertised in Moab itself, we have two very good newspapers, it was not advertised. There was no competing bid, it was just simply sold to Loves. And as far as I know, it was not formally approved by the San Juan County Commissioners previous to this commission. I don't know if it exists in any public record, but I couldn't find it. So it was kind of like done behind closed doors without public input. I would also like to say the value of the land has significantly increased since 2018. It is certainly worth more than what they are going to pay for it because of the new zoning in Moab and Grand County. And I would also like to say his $501,000 to schools in San Juan County. There's 3,246 students, that comes to $154 per student. They are not supporting any part of the budget of the schools in San Juan County. It's only for outside special activities or projects that must be applied for. If the schools had to depend on Sitla money, we wouldn't have any schools. And I also really do not understand why Sitla, as a quasi-public agency, cannot answer the threat that the Loves has to the health, safety, and welfare of residents. We have been bringing up these concerns, they're not even concerned of the health of the schoolchildren living in the area. So I think we at least deserve an answer to that. Thank you.
Kim Henderson?
Kim Henderson.
I just am here to invite the Commission, formally invite the Commission to an upcoming town hall meeting that will be actually taking place here in this very building on October 9th. I not only would like to invite the Commission- building on October 9th. I not only would like to invite the Commission, but I would highly encourage those that are able to attend, to attend. I feel like it's a wonderful opportunity, seeing how this is a town hall meeting that is open to all citizens, and all citizens of San Juan County are invited. We are really hoping for a diverse audience so we can discuss topics as citizens. I feel like this is the perfect opportunity for the Commission to really gain a pulse on the concerns of your constituents. And I can't imagine any other better opportunity for that to take place. Again, we would really hope that there will be some participation and some attendance from the Commission. I've got some flyers here. I would encourage you to hand them out to your chapter houses that you frequent. And if you need any more, please let me know. I'd be happy to provide more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Patrick Barry from Spanish Valley. I came here particularly to say thank you. And I'm going to start with John David. This guy carries the budgets all the time. You've got one year's budgets, five year reserves, capital reserves, 10 years, 20 years down the road. You've got a plan for tomorrow, plus you've got a plan for the next century. I just wanted to say thank you. I know you're the tax man, and I know sometimes survival doesn't seem nicely of you, but I want you to know that you are appreciated, and we thank you very much for everything you're doing. And yeah, my property taxes has gotten up. That's good. And I haven't voted against the school bond ever, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for everything that you do. Commissioners, I also want to say thank you very much, both of you, for reaching out and listening to the people of Spanish Valley. Bruce, Commissioner Adams, thank you for the water and sewer. That's going to help our community greatly. My Grand County water bill of $20, because I've got septic, is going to go $40 for water and $40 for sewer, but it's going to benefit our community, and I believe it's money well-stemmed even though it's coming out of my pocket. I do appreciate what you guys are doing. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much on behalf of that. I don't pretend to know what the people of Glanning need, and I don't pretend to know what the people of Monticello need, but I do, and I feel sorry for the Commissioners, because you've got to know all of our wants and feelings, but Spanish Valley is separate and different. I was looking at your lights. People have a miscommunicative understanding of dark skies. You can't see the ceiling, and you can't see what's happening in the back of this auditorium here because the way the lights are fixed, because it's using efficient lighting and smart lighting. And that's what dark skies is. It doesn't say no lights. It means use the light smart. Use the wide proper type of lights. You've got soft lights in there, there's dark lights over here, and you know, those are different things that need to be used in different areas. You've got an acoustical wall here, you've got a flat wall back here. This is used to muffle sound. So, there are different things that we need when development is being put in, in a residential neighborhood. And so, those are some of the things that we're reaching out for, to do. Also, just to let you know real briefly, I work for the city of Moab. I'm not representing the city of Moab, but 83% of all of our revenue comes from tourism. All righty. This is how we make our living. And Arches National Park and Canyonlands and Needles down in here, they attract people from around the world. And the mission of the parks is to keep it the same way it was 50 to 100 years ago. God created a tremendous beauty in Arches. We honor, my wife has been doing volunteer work since 2007, and when it gets really busy, she orders me to volunteer also. And so, we need to keep it quiet, and we need to keep it dark. Thank you very much.
I'm short. I don't know if you can even hear me. Is this better? Hi, good morning, Commissioners.
Take it out.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Monae Monae Clark, I live in Spanish Valley. I just want to also thank the Commission for all of your hard work. I would like to thank you for holding meetings in different places around the county. I drove here, and the more places you hold meetings, the more of the county I get to see. So, I hope that you'll consider coming to Spanish Valley. I just want to also just talk a little bit about the landmark progress that's been made during the moratorium. They did go reach out to the public, and to our group especially, to get our input on the development process and plan. And you probably have seen this document already. It's the San Juan County Spanish Valley Development Ordinances of San Juan County zoning ordinance in the state on September 13th, 2019. This will be coming before the county P&amp;Z, and we're studying that. And I just want to say I'm very excited about this new 10 ordinance package. I think that it incorporates so many of the ideas that I personally sent in. Very happy with their landscaping and their water efficient ordinance. And I'm also really pleased with the dark sky, which they've, it's not called dark sky. It's called the lighting illumination sign ordinance, but it covers the restrictions and the requirements for lighting, which is all about dark sky. And so, the goal, I know for the Commission is to put in place a new highway ordinance, especially before the moratorium's up. So, that I think can be done, and if nothing else, at least get that passed. I'd like to say that I really don't want any trust stocks at all in Spanish Valley anywhere. That would just be my preference. I think Spanish Valley and Moab Valley is one of the most beautiful valleys on earth, and grew up there, and it's my homeland. And I don't want to see any large industrial-scale things like Loves. And I ask that the Commission consider communicating with SITLA in whatever way you can to tell SITLA that Loves is an inappropriate use in that place. Thank you.
Yes, hi. I'm Sheila Cannavon. I live in northern San Juan, near Spanish Valley. And I wanted to thank you today. Like, it was really cool having that presentation from SITLA, and I just wanted to follow up with, thank you, Commissioner Merritt, for not allowing public comment, because it actually turned into a cool conversation outside with Director Urae and Brian Torgeson. And that was, you know, it was great that they stayed for a few minutes and we could talk. And one of the things that I talked with them about is that I had found this report to the Utah Legislature in 2006, and it was actually a performance audit of SITLA that was done by our state auditor. And I got a chance to ask about some of the changes or not that, you know, have been made in response to this report. But basically, I wanted to let you know that I was alarmed when I read this report, because it states, this is our state auditor saying this, "Like most other states, revenues from trust lands in Utah do not significantly contribute to overall funding for public education." So, it is so important that we get money for schools, and this check is good, but it's not what SITLA could be doing for us. And one of the things they said horrified me. They've increased their endowment now to 2.5 billion. Well, in this report, they said they'd stop at 1 billion, and then they'd start distributing not just the interest, but 2% of the endowment itself to the schools. That would be huge. And to point to a state like Texas and say, oh, you know, all we have is a pittance compared to their 40 billion. Well, we're not Texas. We're a much different state than Texas. And why do we have to keep doing that? It's like colleges, that they build their endowment. In the meantime, the students' loans are going up, the teacher salaries are going down, the benefits are gone. You know, SITLA needs to be a better partner. But that conversation was cool, and I think in the future, we'll get to have more input early, and with your help too, if you could facilitate that, so that we're not enemies. You know, we can talk to each other, and we can offer suggestions, and that's what we were trying to do outside. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Tony, owner of Desert Torres Resort and Bluff. First, thank you for your time, and thank you for taking all the arrows for the rest of us. Appreciate you guys. And one thing I'd like to have the Commission consider is to dissolve the inner local agreement with Bluff. Bluff just recently, I'll hear it go ahead and incorporate it. And they, we have a planning and zoning process to where that process has been arbitrary and discriminatory, and there is a, basically a sham process of appeals. And the answer to any appeals that they have is to go to district court. There's absolutely no representation for business owners or Native Americans on the Planning and Zoning Commission or the City Council, except for one member. And what I'm afraid that's going to happen is the taxes that we collect, the resort tax, the TRT money, and the sales tax, is going to go to find all these lawsuits that they're going to be mired in, instead of spending that money on providing services for the town. And I would hate for San Juan County to be aiding Bluff and them being in the middle of those lawsuits instead of doing the right thing. And I've given them every opportunity to do the right thing and change a zoning on a piece of property that's been commercial for a long time that they turn to residential. So, I really would urge the Commission to dissolve that inner local agreement. Thank you.
And the last one we have is Mr. Summers.
Best be yet outside.
Did he not want to speak, Mac?
He's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
He's one of the special service districts.
Okay.
We'll talk to him. We'll talk about that.
That's about it? Or is that 224,000? Or get there with it? We will go ahead and proceed to the next one. New hires. Mr. Burke?
Good morning. For a few minutes. I'll be brief.
Want to keep that mic from holding?
Do I need to?
Yeah. The public?
I need to be hot. Like I said, I'll be brief. We need to ratify or approve two new hires. We interviewed Courtney Fennell for a senior center aide position in Monticello. She was the only qualified applicant. They'd like to recommend that she be hired for that position. And then the San Juan County Road Department needs to hire a labor light equipment operator. We interviewed Colton Lee for that position. He was the only qualified applicant, and we'd like to offer that to Colton if approved.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation from the department on the human services to hire these two people.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next would be ratify approval notice of resident record potential property tax change. John David Nielsen.
Okay, so, put that on the agenda in case the discussion that we had earlier got into more specifics, and we were ready to announce if there was going to be a tax increase, but we didn't, we didn't get into any specifics. So, I guess my request would be to table that item until the next meeting, if applicable.
Yeah, I'll just say one thing about raising property taxes. I think the library department wants to raise the library tax. I think the public health department wants to raise taxes for the public health. I think that those two items would be significantly less than the 17% increase on property, and I'd like to see that broken out as a separate thing than the overall property tax increase. I guess my stance on the thing would be unless the, unless the citizens really come out and support an overall increase in property taxes to provide the services for the county, I think we need to delineate between the two, Mac. So...
So, with that, you're approving the two?
No, I think, I think we need to come back to our next meeting and have two separate possibilities of a property tax increase. One for the two departments that have requested it, and then one that would be an additional property tax increase to fund other county I'm not a big believer in raising property taxes so we can spend more money.
Your motion?
I'll move that we table this item until our next commission meeting.
I second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Table motion. What's next? Next would be resolution of appointing a San Juan County representative and alternative representative for the Utah County Debiting Pool Annual Membership Meeting. So, we have here a draft resolution, and I'll go ahead and motion to have Mr. Adams be the prime appointed, and secondary alternative is Mr. Mayor Boy.
Okay. I'll second that.
So, would all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, may I have it? Unanimous? It's up to you then, David. Mexican Hat Special Service District Board appointment, Mr. McDonald.
I appreciate that. We've had three applicants that have submitted their request for approval to fill the Mexican Hat Special Service District Board, which is governed by the county commissioner by state code. This is, we can either, the commission either has an opportunity to appoint or they can go through an election process. We're recommending the appoint and the three is, my understanding, and not knowing the facts to this, but my understanding is that the commission has been fulfilling these board members for the special service district here in Mexican Hat. So now we have the fact that we have three volunteers that have come out showing their willingness to do so. And something that we want to continue to encourage that volunteer service to fill these positions. They oversee the culinary, water and sewer of this Mexican Hat district and so it is required by state code that we have this board as a special service district. We have a request here from, so I've got three requests. I've got Julie Sword as the chairman, Travis Summer as the treasurer, and then I've got Joy, so Joy Howell, as the request for this secretary position. We do have two of them in attendance today. Travis Summer was the one that had wanted to jesse a public comment. It was mainly for to speak towards this agenda item here. And if you'd like, we can call them up, at least so you're aware of who they are so you can kind of get some face time with them and ask them any questions that they may have.
I think, Mac, also it needs to be pointed out that Danny Fleming works for the special service district. He's the certified operator. And I would assume that they probably want to continue with Danny being the certified operator of the system. And, um, he makes a minimal salary to do that, but I'm excited to have the residents of Mexican Hat take over the position of board members. I think that's appropriate and, um, yeah, whatever needs to happen if they'd like to speak, that's probably.
Do you want to try some others?
How's it going, guys? I was just going to ask if we did get approved or appointed for it, if we could have a spot at the fire station for paperwork, for paperwork and an office and the whole meeting's going.
I, I, I think that's an appropriate request and don't we have an office in there for, for the heat? Oh, let's see, what do they got?
Yeah, there, we do, yeah.
Yeah, are they still using that office?
They're, they're still using it, yes.
So that, that comes from AOG and Price that administers the heat program?
Light heat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, would you want to build some walls and make a separate office or do you just want to have an area where you could?
Probably just an area for now, you know what I mean? So we could, you know, paperwork and hold meetings and stuff like that.
So who operates the, the fire, um, district? Is it you?
There's nobody that operates the fire station right now.
Okay, all right.
Um, that would probably come later. We would like to eventually get it back going, yes.
Yeah, I, as long as it doesn't interfere with the emergency services down there then?
No, it shouldn't.
Yeah. I, I would approve that request.
Motion?
Yeah. Make a motion.
The motion is made by Mr. Adams who approved the, what is it, resolution or?
Well, I guess my motion needs to be more specific. I would move that we approve the two people who have submitted applications to serve as board members of the special service district. And the second part of my motion would be to approve the request to use some area in the fire station for the, for the office or the paperwork and so forth of that special service district.
Administered?
Yeah.
Okay. Second?
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay. And Travis, maybe, um, maybe you can talk to Mac. We might have some surplus filing cabinets or desks or chairs or office equipment that might, you might be able to access. Oh, and Mandy, Mandy probably knows more about that.
Yeah, I haven't been in there, so I'd like to, you know, to get in there and see what we, what we can do.
Yeah, if you want to work with these guys, there might be some surplus stuff that you could use.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Approval to replace?
I think Joy wants to.
I'm, I just, when you were saying, when you were saying you approved two, you approved three of us? But I noticed you said you approved three.
Is there three?
You said two.
Well, I meant, two motions is what I was.
Okay, but it's approving all three of us. Joy included?
You said two.
Okay.
That's why I was wanting to.
So is there three?
There's three of us.
So you have Julie Sword as the chair.
Oh, okay.
And then you've got Travis Summer, treasurer.
And then Joy as secretary.
Okay. I'll amend my motion then.
Sorry.
To approve all three applicants to the special service district of Mexican Hat.
I tell you, first, you're discriminating. Okay, somebody else.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The motion is amended to include three, uh, interested, uh, as a, what is it?
Mexican hats.
Special board appointment. That's what it is. And amendment, the motion amendment is made, I second it.
Okay.
I approve and new vote stands the same two. You're opposed. So, unanimous. Last one here, I hope, do we add another one? Approval to replace windows, the public safety building. Somebody escaped?
Oh, I'm here.
They broke the window, Mr. Perkins.
Good morning, good afternoon, whichever it is. What we'd like to do, we've got four windows on the north side of the public safety building that have gotten some moisture in one way or the other, but anyway, they're very difficult to see out of. And basically, they've lost their efficiency. So we would like to replace those windows. We have three bids, one from Sunglass out of Farmington, New Mexico, thirty-four seventy-two for all four of them. Cortez Glass, twenty-eight ninety-eight. And Rick's Glass out of Moab for twenty-six sixty. We would like to give this bid to Rick's Glass out of Moab if we could.
Your motion?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I think it's something we really, you know, it's unforeseen that we come up and we need to, we need to take care of it.
I've got the money in my budget to do it.
Okay.
Vote?
Oh, yes.
Unanimous? Done deal.
Thank you.
Campbell's here. We had a request of a closed meeting, a closed session.
Yeah, Campbell wants one.
Sign up on?
Put your John Henry on there.
This one?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion to go into a secondary session.
Yes, I think our county attorney sent us an email and said that there's a need for a closed session for, to talk about legal issues and so I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? No opposition? With that, the only other person would be, Mr. Lofts.
Yeah.
What about the?
Yeah. How are you?